Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk call to roll to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Laloe.
Here.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gara.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings is expected momentarily. Councilmember Vang or Mayor Protem Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I'm here.
Would Councilmember Kaplan please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance?
Please rise for the opening acknowledgement.
Your mic.
I got it.
There you go.
There we go. Hey. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanam people, the Southern Maidu, the Valley and Plains Miwok, the Patwin-Wintun people, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Good afternoon, everyone. Members and members of the public, before we get started tonight, this city council, since the beginning of COVID, March of 2020, has rightfully gone above and beyond what has been required in terms of protection of each other, protection of the public, and modeling the best behavior. In fact, so much so that we returned to open session together at a significantly later date than a lot of other public bodies, right or wrong. We thought that that was the right thing to do. Since we've come back, we required informally that members of the public and members of the council wear masks. And obviously, that's a good precaution. But I also think it is time that we give the members and the members of the public the discretion to use their best judgment around what they feel, what everybody feels comfortable with, and deciding whether or not you want to wear a mask. And so tonight, I'd say, and be honest, it's a minor inconvenience, but it is a little harder to communicate with each other in the public with the masks on. So members' judgment, if you're feeling sick, or you're just coming off of a flu or a bad cold or something, obviously, it's the right thing and a good precaution. But I want to leave it to everybody's good judgment, includes members of the audience, and that's the way I think it should be, without objection. All right? Thank you. Let us, we have a short agenda tonight, and by the way, for the new members especially, not every meeting will be a short agenda. In fact, we are, we are, we are easing, we are easing everybody in. But it's okay, as Councilmember Talamontes and I were talking while coming down, you know, to start to ease in just a little bit. Tonight, we have a very, very important subject to talk about, and next week, we're going to have, I think, a pretty full agenda, but it's gonna, it's gonna start getting heavier. But, and welcome, Councilmember Jennings. So tonight, let us begin with the closed session, excuse me, not with the closed session, with the consent calendar, and ask whether there are any items which members would like to discuss separately and/or vote on separately. I don't see anybody up in the speaker queue. Is there public testimony on the consent calendar?
Yes, Mayor, I have two hands raised, and I would like to remind members of the public, if you'd like to speak on an agenda item, when the agenda item begins, if you're in council chambers, please fill out a speaker slip and turn that into the clerk. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand, and after the first speaker, we will no longer accept speaker slips in the chambers, and the raise hand feature in Zoom will be disabled. So as I said, I have two online. First one is call-in user one. Maybe you'll unmute.
Yes, this is Lambert Davis, and I'm calling on number four. The reason I'm calling on number four is because I've been studying this department, arts and culture and the economy, and I believe that the lady named Megan is doing a wonderful job trying to include diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I believe that from when I encountered her, when she came to District Two, and the mayor was there, and Mr. Laloe, and that was a wonderful meeting, and I've heard a lot of people that are in that world, economy, the arts, culture, they've spoken very highly of her. So because I saw that it pertained to Megan, I wanted to throw my endorsement in there and say that I think she's doing a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Shira Lane.
Hi, my name is Shira. Thank you for having me. I want to also say that Megan's doing a fabulous job. I want to welcome the first, the new council members, and I'm really excited that the city is getting funding from the county. I do want to say that, although thank you, Mayor and council members, that we got the biggest amount of funding during COVID, arts and culture is still not a line item on the city budget. Back in 2008, arts and culture used to get a portion of TOT tax dollars, and that was taken away during the Great Recession and has not been reinforced. So while we have seen the most funds during COVID, thanks to the mayor and some of the council members that are on, that are here right now, I'm looking ahead at 24, 25, and we need to figure out some kind of sustainable revenue system for arts and culture in our city. We're the capital, and we need to figure out how we have sustainable funds. We are not a line item on the city budget, not receiving sustainable revenue from TOT currently, so just want to put that on the agenda on the minds, and thank you for considering it.
Thank you for your comments. Tom Hip is our final speaker on the consent calendar. Tom, it shows that you're unmuted. It's your turn to present to the council. Mr. Mayor, I do show him unmuted, but not speaking.
Mr. Hip, is it? Okay. Sorry, maybe you could call in next week, and we're happy to hear from you, or you can call any of our offices, and we'd be happy to help you and hear your concern. All right. Members, let's move to the one discussion item on tonight's.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the consent calendar.
We need to move to the consent calendar, that's right.
Do I have a motion?
Such details.
Mayor, I have a, may I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gara and a second by Councilmember Maple?
Thank you, I need saving. Thank you.
And we can do all in favor.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Okay, thank you for helping me out, Vice Mayor. We do move to the one discussion item tonight, and to, you know, the average citizen, a resident out there, you may look at this, oh, another report from another governmental agency about an update to some program. As I introduce James Corliss, who is the executive director of the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, I just want to say that this is a really important presentation. It's really important because the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, the Sustainable Community Strategy, is in fact the literal blueprint, and that's what it was called when it was first envisioned, for how the city, the county, and the region should and must grow over the course of the next years and decades if we are going to meet our climate goals and if we are going to sustain a good, healthy way of living in Sacramento. And after the failure of Measure A in November of 2022, this last November, when Mr. Corliss is about to present to us, and the discussion we're going to have is really, really important as a crucial point, I wouldn't just say a starting point, for our collective discussion as a council, as a county, and as a region about what we should do going forward on transportation, on housing, and on climate. So with that, no pressure, Mr. Corliss, with that introduction, I want to welcome you and ask you to tell us what you want us to think about and consider in the days and months ahead.
Governor Steinberg, great introduction. I'm glad we were compelling enough for you to.
Did you, did you say governor? You said mayor.
I think I said mayor.
I said mayor.
Was that a forty in the slip?
Okay, that's okay. Go ahead.
I think I said mayor so far. It's great to be here. I really appreciate being able to do this in person in front of all of you. Welcome to those who are new on serving on the city council. It's great to, great to see you. And I just want to recognize our veteran board member appointment to SECOG, Councilmember Rick Jennings, who chaired the Board of Directors last year of SECOG and did an incredible job. In fact, a lot of them I'm going to talk to you about tonight, you'll see, has got his fingerprints all over it and couldn't ask for better leadership. And then I want to say, welcome to Councilmember My Vang, who is going to be our second appointment on the Board of Directors. So Mayor Steinberg, I think you set this up really well, and I know whenever we talk about regional planning or government plans, yes, we run the risk of people's eyes glazing over. So I want to, I want to try to frame this tonight as this is a plan that will actually stretch into the year 2050. This is a plan for the next 28 years, and it asks the fundamental questions of what kind of a place do we want to live in? What kind of housing do we want to have? How affordable should it be? How are we going to move around, how are our children, our grandchildren, the next generations, how are we going to leave them a place that is better than we found it? That is essentially the question. How can we do that? By guiding transportation, land use, housing, jobs, development, growth patterns, racial equity, climate change, all of these things are inherent in this plan. So just to back up a little bit, so the Council of Governments are SECOG. Some people often think this is just within Sacramento County, but I want to remind you all, we're a massive metropolitan region. We cover six counties and 22 cities. And what is unique in many ways about your Council of Governments is that every single city sits on the SECOG Board. Mayor Steinberg mentioned the blueprint, and I hope if you don't know, we get a chance to talk to you a little bit about the voluntary bottom-up growth process and really sort of public engagement around a plan in 2004 that was called the Blueprint. It took two years to get to that point, and during those two years, from 2002 to 2004, the region said it did not look like the look of where it was heading. Its future was more air pollution, worse traffic, less affordability, right? So the Blueprint was a 20-year-ago, bottom-up, resident-led process that led to a reformation of the SECOG Board and having every single city and county sitting around that table. But it also said, we're not going to accept just status quo. We're not going to accept the straight-line trends. Couple lawsuits didn't help, didn't hurt either. And so that really started, you know, this is, this has, this blueprint plan from 20 years ago ran national awards, and the latest plan that we're about to update that we want all of your help with and all your residents in your districts is going to be called the Blueprint for precisely that reason, because we think it's time to revisit where we're heading, our long-term projections, and I'm not here tonight to sugarcoat anything. I'm saying, in many ways, some of our indicators were off track, and maybe I don't have to tell you that. Maybe that's why you ran for office, or you're worried about this too. But in terms of our carbon emissions and climate, in terms of our racial disparities, in terms of our transportation system falling apart, right, our region and our city being less affordable, these are not the right trends. So we want to disrupt those, and we want to change them. But, but again, the Council of Governments that you sit on, you have two seats on, is every single city and county, so you sit along every side, alongside every jurisdiction. We do more than just transportation. People think of us as a transportation agency, but we do housing. We do climate planning, as the mayor referenced, and we're here in many ways to help all of you as individual jurisdictions. So I'm really here tonight to do two things. One is to really tee up and give you a preview of our long-range plan we're calling the Blueprint that we're redoing this next year in 2023, and really ask for your help and tell you that we want you and your residents to be engaged. And then I want to just give you a couple of things to end on that are the initiatives that we have been undertaking, I mentioned Councilmember Jennings, that are the implementation of our last plan, right? What does it look like on the ground in order for us to be able to actually implement our long-range plan? So, okay, a little bit about regional planning 101. The mayor mentioned the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, Sustainable Community Strategy, the mouthful, we're calling it the Blueprint, but it is that plan, as the mayor well knows, we have to do, we have to meet a lot of federal and state requirements. One of the state requirements is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from the transportation sector by 19% per capita by 2035, from a 2005 base year. That is not easy to do. We barely made it last time, and it's going to take a lot in order for us to make it this next time. It's important that we do it, though, and it's going to take, require some really critical conversations, some tough conversations, and some trade-offs. So this is a strategic plan. We don't just take all the general plans across the region and add them all up and staple them together. That's the reason we have the stapler in the bottom-left corner. We're not stapling, we're not just trying to say, okay, what are all your transportation projects? No problem, we'll fund all of them. This is a strategic plan, right? We have limited resources and limited dollars. We actually couldn't even build out all the general plans in the region if we wanted to, so where is actually the best place to direct growth and more housing and more reinvestment, right? And those are strategic questions that this plan has to answer. So here's my analogy. If you had a house and you had to do a renovation to it, and your family perhaps was growing, right? You wanted more space, you felt a little bit cramped, but your roof had a hole in it, and you wanted to, you wanted to add a second story, and your foundation was crumbling. You couldn't do all those things. You didn't have money to do it all, right? So you've got to be thoughtful and smart about how you both fix what's broken and figure out how to strategically give yourself more space and expand. That's the essential challenge of our long-range plan. We don't have all the money in the world. The feds are not going to come and rain dollars down on us, although we're going to fight like hell to go get competitive grants at the federal level and the state capitol, but they're not going to solve it all for us. Even if Measure A had passed, we wouldn't have all the money in the world, so we have to be thoughtful. We have to be strategic, we have to be performance-based. And so when we develop this plan, you'll hear a lot from your staff and all across the region about what projects are in our long-range plan and what projects are not, what growth development patterns are in our plan, what specific plans and new growth areas are not in our plan. So it's very important. We don't take all that and put it in. It's a strategic conversation, and that's what's happening between now and the end of the summer. And I've got Hannah Schudin here from our staff, who, we're ready to do events in your communities, we're ready to pop events and engage your, engage your residents in this process. The framework of the plan that is guided by board action from last year is a triple-bottom-line framework, and we want to hold all these goals as high as we possibly can. It's a triple-bottom-line framework of equity, economy, environment. In other words, how do we invest in our infrastructure, and how do we grow and get more housing and housing options that are affordable, that maximizes equity, that maximizes economic prosperity, and that maximizes environmental sustainability, and, and especially climate resilience and climate adaptation, which I probably don't have to convince you about, but we are ground zero for that. So we have to do all of those things. We have to do them, actually required to do them by federal and state law, but we want to do them, right? We want to maximize those three goals. I mentioned transportation. It's how largely, again, some people think about us and as an agency that we do, and yes, we do transportation. We, we want to support your local staff in funding really critical projects, like a lot of your complete streets and your safety projects and your protected bike lanes, as we're showing right here. We've, we're a big partner with Sacramento Regional Transit and funding a lot of the transit projects. We helped stand up the Bike Share Program. There's a lot of things that we're involved in from a transportation perspective. But again, from a budget perspective over a long-range plan, we're not going to be able to do everything. So there's going to be a very tough exercise around which are those transportation investments in the long-range plan in the city of Sacramento? They're going to move the needle on equity, economy, and environment the most, and those are the things that are going to be, that are going to be front and center. The other thing which goes back to the blueprint and which Mayor Steinberg talked about to kick off this presentation is, while transportation is critical, and we want to get as many people onto transit and biking and walking and van pooling and telework as possible, a lot of our climate strategy is actually a housing strategy. Our climate strategy for this region is actually building housing where people don't need to drive as much. And we, as, we are one of the fastest-growing regions in California, so the last census, we are faster growing now percentage-wise than the Bay Area, LA, and San Diego. We have more of our growth still in front of us than most regions in California, so the decisions we make about how to grow, phasing that growth, the balance between urban infill, suburban revitalization, and phased greenfield development, that balanced portfolio of growth is absolutely critical to reaching our climate targets. Because if we have too many people go to the edge of the region in wonderful bedroom communities and then have to drive an hour or two hours every, you know, each direction, we will, we will bust our climate targets, right? So we do, we know we're in a housing crisis, and we need more housing, but we need it in places where people can drive less, that's more affordable and attainable. So we are going to provide in the next couple of months the beginning set of data around our plan, and we're going to provide the whole region and all of you and all the public three different, what we call pathways. You might think of them as scenarios and sort of scenario planning. And one pathway is sort of illustrated by this example. And pathway number one will actually not focus as much development in the existing urban area and even existing suburban area, but more on the edge. Pathway two will have a bit of a balance, about two-thirds in the existing area, one-third new growth area in the greenfield and the edge. And finally, pathway three will be largely a revitalization of our existing urban footprint. An interesting little fact, if we looked at all the growth that is still in front of us in our region, we could accommodate it all on our current urbanized footprint. All the vacant strip malls and the underutilized parcels and the parking lots, and I'm not just talking about downtown Sacramento, I'm talking the entire region, we could actually accommodate, not with Manhattan-style 20-story, but just duplexes and triplexes, build it on our current existing footprint. So the question is, you know, do we want to do that? What are the barriers to doing that? Is that a good idea? Are there other things that will come along with that? We believe the answer to that is largely yes, and one of the biggest barriers that we've discovered is, and we can talk about SEQA, and we can talk about, you know, do communities, are they involved in their planning for their neighborhoods? All very valid, but the very inglorious water, sewer, and utility infrastructure upgrades are actually the thing that is, that is turning off the spigot to development in our, in our older suburban and urban neighborhoods, commercial corridors and strip malls. So we have a program I'll talk about in a second called Green Means Go. It's all about trying to get infrastructure dollars from the state and the feds to help revitalize a lot of our existing communities that can make this housing happen. But these three scenarios and these pathways will be really important, and we're going to, yes, talk about the greenhouse gas reduction that's available in each of these that we project, because that's a big state requirement we have to meet, but we're also going to give you quality of life, access to jobs, access to childcare, the ability to have transportation choices and housing choices. On these pathways, we're going to be able to actually give you, what does it look like for people's daily lives? Are they able to walk and bike and be healthy? We're going to give you health statistics, air quality, physical mobility, right? So it's going to be a really rich and robust set of data that we hope to give you on these three choices. The, the point is not for the region and all of you to choose one. The point is to have a discussion about what's the future look like and what are the upsides and downsides of different scenarios, right? Each one of these, infill, balance, and sprawl, or ex-urban growth. So we hope that's going to be really illustrative, and again, we will begin that process around March, and we'll have months and months culminating in a larger public forum in June, and then that will all feed into what we call our preferred scenario this fall. And I mentioned engagement. We really want your help, right? We want your help, and we want, and we will work, we work very closely with your staff, but we want to get out, not just hold a public hearing at the SECOG office at night, but we want to get out to where your residents are. We want your local knowledge about farmers' markets and pop-up events, and we're willing to come anywhere and talk to anybody, so we would love to get your help on this engagement piece. And generally speaking, the timeline on this, now that we're actually into 2023, as I mentioned, is we're doing a lot of outreach and engagement. We've got these pathways. We're going to be involving elected officials very closely and have a larger, as I said, public forum in June. We have said here that our adoption is '24, but with, for a lot of reasons, we are actually looking to extend the timeline of our plan into 2025, which I can, I can get into and answer questions. So I'm just going to give you now, so that's the, that's the basic, that's a setup on the plan. I don't have data for you, I don't have that, but I, we will soon, but I wanted to just let you know why this is so important, as, as, as our, as our board members know. And then I just want to finish on a couple of initiatives that are really, think of them as the ways that we implement the plan, and I think they are incredibly relevant here to the city of Sacramento. The first is around equity and racial equity. It is, I think, very true about transportation in general as an industry, that we have done a pretty bad job about really truly engaging communities, and especially disadvantaged communities, low-income communities and communities of color, in engaging them in shaping their transportation and infrastructure future. So we want to do better, but we're not going to do that at SECOG, to be very clear. We're not going to drop into your neighborhoods without your staff or you. We will do this in partnership with you. So our Air Engage, Empower, Implement Program, our board has put $3 million of seed fund into a community planning program, and we want to work with all of you as the cities and counties, and also your neighborhoods and your local knowledge, to really make sure that we are doing some really good public engagement processes to allow communities to identify their safety barriers, their transportation barriers, their housing challenges, and that can then help feed up into a lot of the work that we're doing to actually provide grants and help win grants on behalf of the region. I mentioned Green Means Go. This is a very exciting program, because we're basically taking a state requirement and mandate, and we're translating it into language and a program that I think the whole region is excited about. So excited that 28 of 28 jurisdictions support Green Means Go, and 26 of 28 now have identified locally adopted by resolution green zones, which are areas that you all have agreed that you want to accelerate, largely older areas, downtowns, commercial corridors, economic revitalization, more housing, more mixed use. I know it's a little hard to see, but these green areas actually represent, again, a huge piece of the region, not in terms of land area, but in terms of opportunity and potential. We won a statewide program of $600 million in the 2021 budget to be able to begin to allocate dollars, and we're about to announce our second round of grant funding, about $33 million, coming up this spring in March. So again, this is the water, sewer, utility upgrades that we think these, these green zones, these infill areas are really critical. Let me just connect the dots, too. Those green zones and those, those infill areas are largely also the very same Sacramento RT bus rapid transit corridors, so we're talking Stockton Boulevard and Florin and Folsom Boulevard, right? So the very same areas that we want more transit service are the very same areas we want more people. And if we get more people there, we get more people riding RT, and we get less driving, and we get better air quality and less carbon emissions. And the, and again, the great thing about this is it's locally driven, it's super creative, and we just met with Congressman Metzwi this morning about this, because we're now looking for federal funding because of all the Inflation Reduction Act and the bipartisan infrastructure law. The feds should be fallen all over themselves, frankly, to fund this program, because it meets climate goals, housing goals, and social equity goals. Just a few more, just to kind of end on, while I sort of want to pop you out of not just the city and the county, but up to the six counties, it is also true, as I probably don't have to remind you, that we are now increasingly an economic mega-region. We are tied, for better or worse, to the San Francisco Bay Area, northern San Joaquin Valley, and actually even increasingly across the 80 and 50 corridors to Nevada. So we have a mega-region working group that we have with Metropolitan Transportation Commission, the San Joaquin Council of Governments. We've identified 12 priority projects that connect the mega-region together, including, by the way, Ace and San Joaquin Rail Service that's coming up here to Elk Grove, Midtown, North Sacramento, and the airport, we hope, in about 12 to 18 months. That service should be going north to Marysville and Chico, and the San Joaquin Rail Corridor from Bakersfield. And the San Joaquin Rail Corridor from Bakersfield up here is also going to increase service. So we're going to be increasingly through passenger rail, Capitol Corridor, Third Track up to Roseville, gets us 10 to 12 round trips daily, not just Placer County to downtown Sacramento, but all the way down to the Bay. So those mega-region projects are essential. The other way we're trying to tie our region together, which I want to, again, just thank Councilmember Jennings for his leadership on, is our Regional Trails Network. This is a plan that took two years, two and a half years to craft. It envisions connecting, this is sort of, you know, a cartoon version of this, but this is building 1,000 miles of paved biking and walking trails to connect every single community in this entire six-county region. So think of the American River Parkway on steroids. You could literally get from downtown Sacramento to the Delta, to Tahoe, to the Yubus Sutter Buttes, get all over this safely, that's family-friendly, right? That it's great for physical activity and frankly, by all accounts, when we think of massive transportation investments, this is a bargain. This is pennies on the dollar in terms of the benefit that it could yield. And particularly for disadvantaged and low-income communities, this increases access. Actually, we know that from data. And again, just want to thank Councilmember Jennings on this. We have a very close working relationship with Greater Sacramento Economic Council, Sac Metro Chamber, Asian Pacific Chamber, with our prosperity strategy, right? So back to our economic E in our triple bottom line, our question to our business community is, what's the infrastructure you need to thrive? Our good, paying jobs and decent jobs, not just build anything anywhere, but actually what's the economic strategy here? So we have a very, very directed economic strategy for this. We're an economic inclusion. And finally, I just want to end on the very exciting Youth Leadership Academy. I know you all have really pioneered a lot of your summer in City Hall and a lot of the, and this really goes credit to Councilmember Chenier when he was there. Started this five years ago. We take high school students from across the region. We put them through an intensive, five-month program about regional planning and climate change and equity and transportation. Members of Congress and legislators come, talk to the kids, and they had never thought about regional plans, nor did they realize we were planning their future. So when they find out that this plan, called the blueprint that we're doing, is actually about their future, they get incredibly engaged. So with that, just want to end there. I really want to thank you for your time and attention, and I'd love to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, James. I just want to thank Rick Jennings as well, who chaired the CACOG board through, let's just say, a very challenging year and did so adroitly, working to bring everyone together. A lot to learn from that process, but certainly the board was well-led.
And just on, I do want to give gratitude to your staff, by the way. Your staff is really great to work with, transportation, land use, housing planning. I know you know this, from the pro-housing designation in the state of California, you were the first. I hope you know all, we are, our region has four of the only seven in a state. So from a, we have to be good actors at the state level in order for the state to recognize us and invest in us. We're doing really well and your staff is leading the way, first in, and you're getting a big bump now in terms of additional funding that's coming. Because of that, that's because of the hustle and hard work of your staff. So I do want to give them a lot of credit.
Thank you. We agree. So let's turn it over. I'm going to open up to members first before we take the public testimony. Let's have a discussion and we'll hear from the public. Let's start with Vice Mayor Geta, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Valenzuela. I know I want to add a comment or two about going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would want to thank, you know, James, you and all of your team at CACOG for, sorry, excuse me, for all of their hard work in this. It's not, it's not easy trying to bring in the multiple counties. And I think what CACOG, maybe it might be lost in sometimes when you're in the city of Sacramento, but CACOG represents, you know, what I would say is a big cross-section of California. You know, obviously, we have the urban area of Sacramento, very dense in certain areas, suburban as well, but also the rural challenges as well. So and, and just the history of itself, the logistical nature of this region, you know, ever since it started. So I think the ability for your staff to be able to put together something like this has been great. And the other thing about the blueprint, because I remember participating in the blueprint, you know, I think it was Memorial Auditorium, and there was a number of us at Sac State who were engaged, you know, trying to get more transportation options for students. But I feel like the, you know, even more so now, the fact that we don't do enough of conversations about our future, what does it mean? I mean, it's too easy many times for local elected officials to respond to the day-to-day challenges and then lose sight of that long-term planning, that long-term needs that happens. And yes, in many of our communities, I mean, there are significant day-to-day challenges that our families need, but I still recall, you know, asking why the light rail didn't go through Sac State when most of us needed it. And that lack of forward planning from the, from my understanding, the chancellor's office in the early 70s, or late 70s, when they were having the discussion about where, you know, what kind of future do we want? We don't have enough of that. So the first comment I want to say is I appreciate what CACOG is doing about making sure that we have much more engagement in this and with the diversity of our communities. Because I will say, when I participated in that first blueprint, as much as there was an effort, I still saw the participation of those involved being pretty homogeneous, you know? It was folks who were engaged, people who were connected to government, had some kind of relationship, and very little engagement with the community. So the fact that you are working on, you know, this racial equity and inclusion to look at making sure how are we bringing in voices from that are not normally represented is an important part to highlight. And the second to say, you know, I want to volunteer and welcome at any one of our community events, you know, whether it's, you know, Back to the Neighborhood, Glen Elder in the George Simp Community Center, whether it's our food trucks at Tahoe Park, or, you know, you know, even the Fourth of July events, you know, I think wherever there's people, we need to be having this conversation about, you know, what do we see ourselves in 30 years? And, you know, having had the opportunity to travel both to Europe and even most recently over the holidays to visit my family in Mexico City, in Mexico, we haven't done that in a good way, you know? And so I think that forward planning and having folks engaged enough to think about what is the future hold for us. I want to also say that I agree with you on this concept about, you know, what we have now, right? You know, the land that we have access to already today. I mean, obviously, the process of the blueprint is going to have that community conversation. And I think we've had, and here in the city, we've had that quite a fair bit, that's led to what I think is innovative and CACOG should be applauded for its creativity on the concept of Green Means Go. We started that conversation here in the city when we were looking at inclusive economic development, first of all, our first commercial corridor strategy when we were looking at how do we improve safety in our areas where there are former highways, there are commercial areas. Highway 50 was Folsom Boulevard and Stockton Boulevard was old Highway 99. Franklin got you to the town of Franklin. And so those corridors, you know, we still see those challenges. I want to commend and thank, you know, CACOG for supporting the San Juan Motel Project. And that's an example of how it's land that's been vacant and left for so long, underutilized, where you actually can get anywhere in RT in 30 minutes in the city or 45 minutes in the greater RT system if we had housing there. It would have never been built had we not focused on the needs to figure out the sewer, water, stormwater runoff. And I think that the CACOG should be commended because once you were able to lobby at the state level, other jurisdictions came in and said, hey, we want a little piece of that action, too. And so there's a lot of credit to go to that effort. I will say, though, that I think that's where our neighboring cities should have followed suit and supported you at a stronger level as well. And I think that, you know, our city should, as we move through the blueprint process, should encourage our other cities to support CACOG's efforts as we move forward because clearly this administration thought that that was a fruitful process, and I would welcome that. I think that during your blueprint conversations, that also needs to happen, is how the public can be more engaged. And what does, and having a bigger conversation, what as a region, how we all affect each other? You know, the, we all know the environmental impacts and obviously AB 617 is a, you know, has required the state to identify some community or protection zones. And they have, one of them of the 10 in the state happens to be in South Sacramento. But that heat island effect that happens here starts in South Sacramento, but it ends up in Roseville and Luvis. The fact that we can't build more housing here creates pressure where now you have to have, you know, funding for the 80 and, you know, 65 over by Rockland. So those, I think, as you move forward in the blueprint conversation, I think making sure that CACOG is that entity, that they're also having that intersectionality of how our region works is going to be beneficial. So those are just some comments, I think, right now. I think that as you move forward, it's important that you don't not only just say, what do we need locally for this community, but how does what's happening in this community affect an adjacent community? The mega-region, you know, everyone, I remember, I think 15 years ago, the conversation of this mega-region was being shared about, well, we just saw the negative externalities of the mega-region with Zoom. It inflated housing prices and created a cost pressure that we saw coming because maybe if we increased, you know, the rail system, that would have happened. Well, Zoom has actually exacerbated that. So I think the positive things of the mega-region is a stronger regional economy, but the negative things means we got to think more aggressively, move faster. With that, I'll say, I think that this is a great conversation for us to be engaged in the public and to be more thoughtful about how are we engaging those who aren't normally involved? We're going to have all our folks that are involved at the APA engaged, we're going to have folks in ECOs, we're going to have the development community, the labor community involved, but we need to be reaching out into the community that normally doesn't get connected. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, again, I appreciate all the efforts and we've got, I think, until 2025 now, as we move through this blueprint process.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let my colleagues know that one of the best things I've ever done in the time that I've spent on this council is to represent CACOG, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, and to push myself outside of my comfort zone. You know, being a council member for a city, the city of Sacramento is a great honor. Being involved in a regional effort like CACOG has really taken it to a whole nother level. And I would encourage each and every one of us to try to get a seat on the CACOG board or a regional board during our time of sitting here because it's so empowering to see all the cities when they come together and they start working together. And that's what I saw at CACOG. And so wonderful leadership. Our current CEO, who's standing in front of us, is one of the best-known in the entire country for what he does. And he has the staff behind him to support him as he moves forward. Incredible staff. Anytime they prepared me in order to lead those kind of meetings the way they did, I can tell you they were an incredible staff. So I want to thank them in advance. This is a great opportunity, and I think James is talking to us now about the outreach and the engagement. And our responsibility as council members to make sure that those who traditionally don't get to the table, get to the table, and that we do everything we can to make sure over this period of time to be able to get them to the table. And we've got to be creative in being able to do that. And so, you know, even though we have time, we don't have time. And we need to have that sense of urgency to move forward now so that we can hear the voice of the people and do outreach and engagement in ways that need to be done. I thank you for all the compliments that you've given me. I think that I was a part of a great team where together we achieved a whole lot. But I think there's a whole lot more to achieve. And so I think you know that. And I'm looking forward to the blueprint as it relates to our climate goals, our healthy living, our land use, our transportation, our housing, all those things that we have to plan for. And I have a saying that I live by, failure to plan is planning to fail. And this is not a region that will fail. And so with your leadership and this council working hard with you, we will do everything necessary. Councilmember Bang and I will represent the council, will be the voice for Sacramento. But at the same time, we know our mayor will be working right there with us, as he did through the entire term of my leadership. Side by side, when we needed him, he was always there. And so I just want to thank you for coming tonight to talk about the blueprint, explain it, make sure that we know how we can get involved and engaged, and how we can move forward to get everyone engaged in the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. And I want to echo, James, thanks for coming and your staff who's here in the audience. This is really exciting. I remember when we took office and realized that the city was in the middle of a general plan update, we were like, ooh, good. It gives you a chance to jump in and really engage in the process. But I think what you're speaking to, to put a finer point on your presentation, it's really about trade-offs. You know, you make a huge investment in a new road or a big freeway expansion project that's hundreds of millions of dollars that could have been spread out into hundreds of smaller speed bumps and bike lanes and bike trails and the sort of things that make our neighborhoods really safer and really great. And so this is really about discipline more than anything. And I think what this represents is a real opportunity to bring the community with us because there's so much lack of understanding of, well, I just, you know, what, how this all connects to making transit work, to making traffic less, to making it safer for kids to walk around and get to and from the parks. So this is a real opportunity for us to go out to the community and bring them along and help them see how they fit in this big, big regional plan and to get their input, but not to start from scratch. You know, we talked to some climate folks recently, and we have so many plans in our city. And I know before the new council members came in, Ryan's team gave the big presentation on, here's our top transportation priorities. If we can get these projects lined up, we feel like we're really going to be moving in a good direction. And so I see this as an opportunity not to start from scratch because I actually find communities, actually, one of my first early organizing was in Councilmember Llovi's district. And I showed up and was like, what do you want? And they were like, we've told you what we want 20 times. They thought I was the city, I wasn't. And I was like, okay, we don't want to start from scratch. It's like, here's what we've heard from you, here's what the plans say. Is this still your priority? What are your priorities? And we've given you this information about this plan and how it works so that we then as council members can advocate, as I've seen Councilmember Bang do, for, you know, improvements on Meadowview Boulevard and other roads in her district, like, we can start pushing for those priorities and the community understands why we're doing this and not that, so that we can really talk that through. So I do want to point, though, that I think for our colleagues, because where we fill the gap, I think, in the CACOG plan is that the big issue with this rule, and it's no discredit, discredit it all to the law itself, Mr. Mayor, because it's a wonderful law, and I know you wrote it and are very proud of it. SB 375. But it's very new-growth focused. And I know for a really long time, we've talked about, you know, we're not going to go to South Natomas or to Meadowview and bulldoze all the single-family neighborhoods and densify them, right? So how do we make transit work in those neighborhoods, too? How do we make grocery stores work in those neighborhoods, too? How do we think about, like, this planning process is a great, because bringing new projects into a neighborhood can be great, and densifying underutilized lots, and, you know, bringing in new investment is wonderful, but it's not going to get us all the way there. So I think the other side of this, from our perspective, and why we should engage so deeply, not only because we're the experts and we know our communities and we can get in there and figure out how to get that input, but because we then need to figure out what our side of this needs to be if we're going to complement and really make that vision happen. How are we going to make that work in a neighborhood that was built long before these principles happened so that they can enjoy the benefits of what that could look like for them as well? And that's a question that I know as we look towards, I know Remy is here from planning, I'm not going to put him on the spot because he's just sitting there trying to observe. But like, how do we make that work in our general plan so that we're putting in those policies and those strategies to complement a regional vision? But I think this is really exciting and I hope all of my colleagues, I mean, the timing of our general plan, our climate action plan, all the conversations we're having, it's so ripe for us to go back out to the communities and say, hey, what do you think? What are we missing? What are your priorities? And to help them understand as well that I know I'm going to be jumping in with both feet and I hope we all will as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Valenzuela, for everything. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you so much for being here. I've actually watched the blueprint over the years. And I agree with my colleagues, but I think the most important word as we look at, we plan this, is what is equitable investment? And I think it's a balancing as well of what exists and like Councilmember Guerra. And like Councilmember Gara talked about, where the midst of how do we get light rail to SAC State, which could have been planned. We all know that light rail has been planned in Natomas to get from downtown to the airport for a long time. I don't want to lose sight of that because that could be something 20 years from now, people go back and go, well, we've talked about it, we missed the boat on that one. Where I think it is, as we talk about transportation and equity, it's the reinvestment in existing older neighborhoods equity as well as new neighborhoods equity and how we connect. But I really appreciate and admire your approach of equitable investment because I think our most recent flood and deluge of rainwater showed where there was not equitable investment in our infrastructure. As you go back, as it does start at the infrastructure of the sewers and the levees, and how do we make sure that residents are safe and we take care of those that are already here? Because how can we grow new when we don't take care of, of what we have? Something I know that you're going to keep in mind, but I would like to highlight, when we talk about outreach, I think it's really important, we here appoint representatives to boards and commissions. So I hope that you do a presentation and get feedback to our active transportation commission as well as our youth commission, because you talk about the youth voice. Each one of us, as a city representative, appoints to these, these boards and commissions that I think their voice is really important as we look at the bigger. But, you know, as I hear often in, in my neighborhood, just so you know, whatever we can do to speed up the connection of the bike trails, I know many of our residences would love to get a slightly safer connected route from North Natomas into downtown so that we do have that safety. But I am all for however we can expand and connect all of those trails together. And thank you, Chair Jennings, for that emphasis and push because that is, that is huge, getting people out of cars and in their bikes for safe bike lanes. We see it all over Europe. It's been done before, so I know we're not the first to, to figure it out. But thank you for what you're doing.
Well, thanks, Councilmember Kaplan. And just, just a note, since you brought up the trails plan, I, you know, I showed you that kind of cartoon version up there, which, you know, looks like a 60s postcard or something, like, nice place to visit. But if you go to our website, and anybody listening too, your constituents can naturally look, you'll see a pretty extensive network that connects urban, suburban, rural, and I think has a lot of connections from your district. But, but let me just, and I, you know, appreciate all the positive comments, but I do want to come back to, as a transportation person by training, by background, right, who is desperate for this region to, like, flex our muscle and go win money at the state level in the capital, who don't understand our larger region, and frankly, the, you know, at the federal level, we've got great representatives, but we are under, we're underperforming getting federal funds coming back here. If all that were true, and we were really successful, we still wouldn't be able to fund everything that everybody says they want, right? And the job is sometimes it lands on your doorstep, and then it sometimes lands on our doorstep, which is, we just don't have enough money. And so for light rail, let me, let's just, just mention this, we cannot extend light rail to everywhere that everyone says in the region they want it extended to. We just can't afford to do that. We probably can make some strategic investments, but we have to be thoughtful about that. And what we can do also, in addition for a fraction of the cost, is actually expand and make our bus system really fast and reliable and frequent, right? And so working with Sacramento Regional Transit, we don't have a bus rapid transit project in this whole region. We had to take our board to Salt Lake City last year to Provo, not even Salt Lake, I have nothing against Provo, but, you know, small town that has its own dedicated lane, right, Councilmember Jennings? And actually, our, when our board members said, like, this is what you mean by a rapid bus that trips the lights and gets me there really fast, I want one of these. And you can actually, they're not cheap, but they're a lot cheaper than giving everybody a light rail extension, right? So that's the kind of, I think, trade-offs and that we have, and believe me, we're working, we work very closely with RT and all of our transit providers. But I think Stockton Boulevard and the Route 51 line presents a great first project, excuse me, project in the region, but we need to double down and really think about, what would it look like to have rapid, convenient, fast, affordable, safe bus service all over the county? And how do we do that? And where do we go beyond Stockton? Because I think that, I do think, having been here now five years, but working in a lot of metropolitan regions around the, we're a very bus-friendly region. But we, but we need to now get the infrastructure to support that because I don't think it, we, we yet realize the potential that, that rapid bus has, as a lot of places like Mexico City frankly have done, because they, you know, they saw that before we did.
Councilmember Maple.
Great, thank you so much. And I really appreciate the, the high-level overview too, as, for myself, as a new member, I'm sure my, the other new members as well appreciate this as a way to kind of learn about what you do and our part in that. I thank you to the mayor, I'm going to be on the SAC RT board as well as STA. Transportation is a huge priority for me, it's what I heard as I knocked on thousands of doors in my district, people are desperate for ways to, you know, get about the city and not be stuck in their cars. It's also a way that we're going to meet our climate goals, so I look forward to working with, with you all and on those boards. You probably saw me shake my head when you said, our climate strategy is a housing strategy, building near transit, urban infill, and an affordability component to that. I couldn't agree more. And I also think that it's also a transportation strategy for us, right? You know, if we look holistically at what our, you know, future is, what our climate future is, it means that, to me, building, building infill, building density, making sure that we're building our transit, and then connecting people through public transit in a way that they can get to their work, they can get to childcare, they can get to everything that they need and not have to rely on, on cars. And so that's, that's the future that I see, I think some of my colleagues also see that as well. So I'm grateful to hear that that's a part of it, and really looking forward to engaging in the community in that way, working with your staff to do that. One of the things that came to mind is, we just had a planning session for Celebrate Oak Park. It's going to be a huge event with thousands of people, that's going to be likely in June, so that's something I'll, I'll talk to you about. But also, Councilmember Kaplan mentioned including youth in the planning process. To me, that makes so much sense, right? This is, we're not just planning for our future, we're planning for, this is the future of their lives, when they will be entering the workforce, going to college, having their own families, and, you know, they should definitely be a part of this process. So engaging with school districts, I'm sure that's something that you're doing, and making sure that, that youth are a part of that planning process. I have a couple of questions. One is around how, if at all, do you utilize technology to reach people in this planning process? You know, whether that's online, using social media, something else. And then another kind of unrelated question is, one of the challenges that I've seen as it relates to transportation especially, is the balance of priorities between rural versus urban, something that Eric Gara brought up. How do you do that balance when sometimes those things are opposed?
Yeah. Those are great questions. So, boy, on the first, and I, you know, between my talented staff over here, and also the folks that we have back at SECOC, the folks I've recognized, I would sort of lean on that. I think we're always looking at new ways, I mean, you know, way back in the blueprint 20 years ago, we were doing the clickers, right, before people seen clickers, and so, and we'll have a lot of opportunity this year. Again, part of our, you know, part of it is high-tech and part of it's low-tech, right? And I probably don't have to explain all those to you who probably just recently won elections by knocking lots of doors. I mean, talking to people where they're at rather than hoping they come to you is sort of a principle we try to abide by. We're pretty active on social media, and we do, you know, we're doing a lot this year, I think, in terms of trying to find different ways to do, like, quick polls and online polls and, but honestly, if you all have any ideas, you know, from your vantage point of what you would like to see or you think, I, I think the whole process of, of engagement and using technology to engage, I think is, I think is critical and a real learning, you know, it's, it's a real opportunity, I think, in this next plan cycle, so that's for. Second is, I'm glad you brought up urban rural. Part of my definition of success of our region is not just that everybody knows where we are and who we are and why we're awesome, and that we win more money and we win our, you know, more than our fair share, but that, that the urban core recognizes the importance and the value of the rural areas, and the rural area is to recognize that without a vital urban core, the whole region is not successful. That is part of my definition of success, right? And let me tell you something in terms of what is, what you're going to hear in the coming months and years, you will hear a discussion when we do our transportation grant awards coming up, did the city of Sacramento get its fair share? And that is an absolutely fair question. You should ask that question, right? That question is as old as politics and, you know, Rome, right? Like, like, who's getting their fair share? So ask that question, but I will tell you, sometimes you will and sometimes you won't. And our job is to figure out what are the best projects to invest in the urban core and what, how do we also provide mobility and housing and opportunity for people in rural areas? Because there's a lot of suburban poverty, there's a lot of rural poverty, and we have to figure out how to take care of all of those, and they're not the same criteria that we use. We need our own local knowledge in rural areas. We're trying to figure out how to stand up a rural electric car sharing program in a rural area in our region, right? So, but we can't, it's very hard to judge sometimes a project in Oak Park versus a project in Cool, in El Dorado County, right? And we do the best we can, and we, we try to be as transparent as we can. And yes, you're going to take a lot of growth in this region, and that's going to help us meet our climate targets, but it doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to get all the funding because we've got to figure out how to also, right, make places and rural areas vital so that people don't leave them and we don't have a brain drain and all the rest of it. So, no, it, it's a simple question with a, with a, it's a really important, and we have a rural-urban connection strategy that my predecessor and our staff launched about 10 years ago. Now we have a coordinated rural opportunity program looking at broadband and, and levees and, and things that actually rural areas need to keep their economy thriving. So, great question.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, James. I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you so much for your thorough presentation, and I'm really excited to join my colleague, Councilmember Jennings, on the SECOC board this year to really help move SECOC in a way where we could build a region where, where you live, your race and ethnicity shouldn't be a predictor of your health and your economic outcomes, and really excited about the racial equity work that SECOC is undergoing to ensure that we really don't leave any communities behind. I'm committed, I'm excited about the outreach engagement that we're going to undergo this year. I know that my colleagues, all of us, are absolutely dedicated to this, and especially engaging deeply with communities that often don't trust government or don't know how to navigate government, don't speak English, right? And so really looking forward to working with SECOC to make sure that we could really reach our hard-to-reach communities. I think one thing that really stood out for me was a comment made by Councilwoman Valenzuela about really figuring out how we can ensure that we don't leave communities behind that were built without considering what their future looks like. I think that is probably, when I think about equity, is like, that's like the next frontier of making sure, when we're doing, we're throwing out the word equity, doing the outreach, but how are we really being strategic and thinking about these communities that were built in the 50s and the 60s? And how are we ensuring that those communities truly are part of the process when we think about dreaming and building this region? And then lastly, you know, I just had one question for you. I know I'm not a new council member, so I know a little bit about SECOC, but I will be new to the SECOC board, and I really do just have one question and wanted to ask you, you know, based on your experience just working at SECOC, and I'm, I'm assuming because this is a new blueprint, wanted to know, you know, what are just some lessons learned from previous blueprint, right? And what can we do differently this time around?
Really good questions tonight, nice job. Lessons learned from, well, I think, I think one lesson learned from previous blueprint is those three pathways I mentioned, which is not to just give you one version of the future, but to give you something that actually is pretty differentiated so that you understand the policy choices before all of you as elected officials in the next two years have implications for the next 25 years, right? So that's, that's one thing I think we've, a lesson learned. You know, I would say another is, and I, again, I, we're, are hopeful that this is a plan to really go a bit deeper, is, I think, as Councilmember Valenzuela very well put it, is, is the trade-off conversation, right? So, you know, we need roads and we need transit, but we've got to figure out how to, like, you know, and we also need to fix things as well as build new things, we can't build all the new things we said we want. We know we're going to have some greenfield growth, but frankly, if that's all we do and we just grow on our edge, the interior of our communities will, will suffer. So, so teasing out those trade-offs so that we are able to engage you all in a, like, actually serious policy conversation. And then I think the last piece, which we don't do a good enough job, in fact, I was with the mayor last week, and they, the question was, what are the pieces of the long, the current long-range plan in Sacramento County and all the cities that really are relevant? And I just had a one-pager, and, you know, I'm not saying it was the greatest thing we've ever done, but it was nice to boil it down to a simple one-page, you know, translation, right? And so I think having people understand what's in the plan and why it's exciting and that it won't just happen on its own, like, we actually need to all get behind it and implement it and get commitments from all of our local partner jurisdictions, every city and county, every special district. I mean, we need to kind of own this together as a region and go get it, make it happen. I don't think we've done a good enough job of that in the past.
Thanks, James.
That one too? When you're done.
Oh, I'm, I'm done. Thank you, thank you so much. Looking forward to serving on SECOC.
Exactly the right question, especially as you're, you know, starting this venture. And I think maybe a little bit of history and context to add to what Mr. Corliss has been talking about, and your questions would be helpful. So this little bill that, actually didn't start this, the blueprint, Sacramento Area Blueprint preceded SB 375. And it was the basis for the state law that I authored in 2006 and 2007 that took the blueprint idea statewide. And it was, and in some quarters, remains a very controversial law. And here's why. It creates a tension, I think it's a healthy tension, some may argue otherwise, between thinking and acting like a region, which as James said, is six counties and how many cities within, excuse me? And 22 cities within the six counties, versus what we also take pride in, you all do, as members of the, individual members of districts and as a city, and that is local control. And how do you balance those two things? That has been ever-present in the so-called Measure A debates over the last couple of years, and, and for a variety of reasons, I think we need to dissect that tonight, we have not succeeded. Maybe one lesson and a suggested path going forward to reconcile, if you will, the regional nature of the plan with local needs is to not make it either-or in this way. Maybe the blueprint can and should be the starting point for how we think about the funding that we need for our own needs within the city. Because ultimately, we're going to have to ask the question in 2023 or 2024, do we need to go to the ballot? And do we want to go to the ballot? And frankly, from my perspective, I haven't made a conclusion yet, in part because I want the process to be different from the past. I want the planners with, with the community input that you described to lay out a template and a starting point for us that tells us what range of investments and what kinds of investments will combined not only provide greater equity, greater mobility, but also meet or exceed the 19% greenhouse gas standard that we've committed to. And by the way, to state the obvious, as I said today in an interview, you know, climate denialism is not chic these days. Nobody goes around saying that climate change isn't real, but when it comes to the decisions that sometimes we are called upon to make, climate not always come first. And maybe it should, in fact, not maybe, it must. We can't just ignore it, it has to be front and center. And so the blueprint is an opportunity for us to have that template, and as James said, not just a one template, but a series of, of choices and options. But that's not the end of the story, because as good of a job as you are going to do and your team is going to do on seeking community input and identifying community priorities, we also have a city climate action plan. We also have a climate commission that made some bold recommendations that we have begun implementing. And so I could see a process going forward where this, where the update of the SCS is in fact the, the starting point, a very important starting point, but then we add to it, we integrate the local community needs as identified by you and your, and the communities you represent, informed by the climate action plan, informed by the climate commission work, and the result of that, of, of, of that work and that combination may lead us to the answer around what we need either citywide or countywide when it comes to funding. I think if we do it that way, it doesn't preclude any project, it just is a more inclusive way to involve way to involve the community, but also to use, I don't want to call it science, but to use the minds that are helping us reconcile all of these needs and, and use that work product as opposed to just all of us saying, well, these are the projects we want, let's put them together and hope that the politics work out and we get a, we get a two-thirds vote or even a majority vote. Because that hasn't worked. So I say your process is crucial, even if it's regional, even if it isn't the absolute end product for what we may decide to do funding wise. Last point I want to make, the thing that has always struck me about SACOG is that even with the sustainable community strategy, it has felt to me like transportation and land use have dominated over housing, even though housing is considered in terms of where housing should go. I just wonder if there is an even more active role when it comes to, for the region to help us figure out how we build enough housing and how we afford it and what types of housing are going to be needed for the regional government? Because there's nothing in the law I know that limits your jurisdiction to transportation and land use. And I know housing is a part of the sustainable community strategy, but not in kind of a granular way like that we are challenged with. Like, how do we fund more affordable housing? How do we build a housing trust fund? What, what innovations have we not thought of that would increase the role of quality manufactured housing in, in meeting the housing need and demand? So I always want to go back to that with SACOG because I think you have the opportunity to expand your mission in a way. That might make some feel uncomfortable, but we need the housing expertise as much as we need the transportation and land use expertise.
And Mayor, we, you know, I'm sure you know this and we worked very closely with your staff on their general plan update and the housing element. And now with the state of California, right, we have the RENA mandate and there's a lot of money that we've been passing through, through the so-called REAP program. But I think a similar question was asked in the Bay Area about five years ago and they came up with a process they called CASA, which was a regional Bay Area housing strategy, which led to a series of bills the legislature, which led them to a regional bond finance authority just for housing in that region.
Maybe we, what would it take to start that here in our region?
Let's talk. Let's talk.
My people will talk to your people.
That's right. No, I, I, look, I, I think a lot of our jurisdictions, the housing crisis is not going away. We will never be the affordable alternative to the Bay Area anymore. As you said, Councilmember Bagira, that's over, right? Zoom, COVID, we're now, we are a mega-region for better or for worse, but we have many of our jurisdictions who are just struggling to figure out how to provide the right housing and the right locations for the right income levels, and they can't necessarily do that all by themselves. So we have a regional housing crisis.
What a great discussion. We do have one, one member of the public who wants to speak.
Mr. Davis, if you'll unmute.
Yes, this is Lambert and I, I'm studying this and I'm listening and I've, I've paid attention to SACOG for years. And the thing about me, you know, I have a background in working in construction years ago, and any time that you have a blueprint, no matter how you call it a blueprint or whatever, it has to be implemented and the people that are implementing it should be held accountable whether they meet the goals. That's why I was impressed with what Mayor Steinberg was saying, is many ways to implement a blueprint. But when I hear it hasn't been successful, but I heard $600 million and I hear these sort of things, people have to be held accountable. I believe that if people's jobs, if they were terminated because they didn't implement it the way it was funded, then I think they would get it right and they would be rewarded if they implement it as well. There has to be some sort of reward punishment for the implementation of a blueprint. You can't throw the word blueprint out just haphazardly. That word means something, blueprint. What I do is a blueprint to it. Everything's a blueprint, but they have to be held accountable. Otherwise, we'll be back, and this is a 20-year conversation we're talking about, two decades. And I come from a background where when you study too long, you're studying wrong. So you should be terminated and bring in some new minds. But when you study too long, you're studying wrong. But great job, Mayor, on analyzing this thing because that's what it needed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
Okay, thank you. James, thank you. Thank you to your team.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers.
We'll be, we'll be in touch.
We will.
Okay.
Really appreciate it. Thanks again.
Okay, bye-bye. All right, members, that does conclude the agenda for January the 17th, 2023. Is there public test-inary items not on the agenda? We do have one, Isaiah.
I have two speakers. First is Barbara Boyce and then Brian Watkins online.
I don't see.
Is Barbara here?
Is Barbara here?
Okay, I will go to online, Brian Watkins.
Hey, good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. My name is Brian Watkins and I live and run a business in the downtown area. 24 hours ago, I had no intention of appearing before you tonight's meeting, but that all changed last night around 9:00 PM. Around 9:00 PM last night, as I was out walking my golden retriever around the Capitol, an untreated man with a stick and a metal rod started yelling obscenities, following us up the street, yelling, chasing me, you know, doing all sorts of things and, you know, yelled some other things that I won't mention here, but this is a case, you know, went on for a few blocks and, you know, I was able to flag down a motorist by jumping in front of traffic on 10th. For whatever reason, at this point, the man chasing relented and seemed to go back in the direction where he came from, filed a police report and life went on. However, while last night was the most dangerous situation I've encountered in my time here, it was by no means an isolated incident. And just the last year alone, my employees have complained about being followed from the parking garage by untreated individuals, the office while stepping over and through human feces, seeing untreated individuals doing untoward acts in public, listening to untreated individuals screaming and yelling at all hours of the day and night, causing untold amounts of property damage, watching untreated individuals doing all sorts of other things. And I mention all of this to illustrate that downtown Sacramento obviously has a homeless problem. And with all due respect, Mayor and City Council, you haven't done enough on this issue. And this meek solution fails to really get at the heart of these untreated folks that are causing issues. And, you know, we really need good examples and good solutions here. And I just ask that you take steps to empower SACPD and mental health professionals to spot troubled individuals like the one last night in the community and to be able to work proactively to remove them before they come into contact with individuals that are merely trying to enjoy our beautiful downtown area. And it was clear with the gentleman last night that he was not seeking help nor the solutions you have all provided. He was on another planet, detached from reality for crying out loud. He needed intervention from a professional. In summary, I'm just.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Good. I'm, I'm going to go first here before I turn it over to my colleagues.
I have one more caller.
Go ahead.
Our final speaker this evening is Lambert Davis.
No, come on. Mr. Davis, how many times? Okay, let's move on, please. Thank you. I, I want to thank the last caller for, for calling in and I'm sorry for your experience. This week, I know our, our team is going to be meeting with the county team to finalize some initial significant steps in the implementation of the city-county partnership agreement. And I am planning next week from this dais, please, together with the city manager, to give a report to you, sir, who called in, and all of the members of the, the public who rightfully expect a plan of action and progress. I will say that the city and county have done an outstanding job during the course of the, the storm events in working together in ways that they have not before to open up respite, congregate shelter, and it was a window into what is possible. Not but, and this partnership agreement is a binding, legally binding document that calls on the city and the county to, to begin in a much more aggressive and assertive way and together to provide relief from the kind of situation that the caller encountered last night. And so this week, there is going to be some significant discussions about how to jump-start that agreement. And next week, I look forward, together with city manager and/or my colleagues, to make a presentation to you about where we are at and where we are going. Because I am not letting the month of January pass without a full report to the public about what our initial steps are going to be to create, to, to address this crisis of confidence, because that's what it is. It's a crisis of confidence. And we've got a great team. The county has a great team, but it's the together and how we operationalize the together and the way we do it that's, that matters. And I am so darn proud of that agreement, but I got to tell you, implementation is everything. Next week, we're going to report on the beginning of real implementation. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first off, let me just say, thank you for coming back next week on, on the report on that. I know the partnership agreement spells out six months as our, our first report back and, and metrics, but I, I do think that much more frequent engagement helps us at the early onset move forward. And I, I, I wouldn't say it's a jumpstart because I think we've started, it just, we have to have a much more faster and aggressive start, that's all. But I want to thank you again for that, for bringing that point up because for those who don't, who aren't, aren't, didn't watch the council meeting or the report when we did the partnership agreement, it does include the, the professional clinicians and the staff and everything that the caller was, was commented, but we just need, we need that at much more targeted and focused and, and aggressive approach. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got one, one for the city manager here, item. I'd like to direct the city manager and staff to come to council with an item on the city's four allocation, for the city council to consider, you know, the grants for permanent supportive housing set aside. We've been working with Hope Cooperative for a proposed room key project in District 6. Because of the, the timing and the application and, and I, I think it's important that the city not leave money on the, on the table there, we've got, we've been successful at Home Key and I, I think this is a, an opportunity for us to be able to make a significant project happen. So if Mr. City Manager and the mayor and I, the staff have been working on this, I'd like to be able to bring that quickly so we don't miss that opportunity to meet the state deadline application.
Absolutely. Vice Mayor, maybe we could have a discussion offline as well, just to make sure we're talking about the, the same programming that Hope Cooperative is bringing forward.
Perfect, yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two announcements I wanted just to share with the public. I shared this last week during our council meeting, but wanted to let you know that next Monday, we'll be kicking off our senior walk program. The neighborhood walk group happens every Monday, Wednesday and Fridays at 9:00 AM at the Pennell Center lobby. So really just want to take this opportunity to invite everyone to join us. We're going to have various incentive prizes and also new shoes for our senior participants. Definitely want to invite my colleagues, if y'all want to join me on Mondays, I'm, there every Monday is at 9 o'clock walking with their seniors and it's really a great way to, to actually start the week. And then my last announcement is, I just wanted to provide some updates on the 102 Acres. Next Wednesday, we'll be hosting a community meeting on the 102 Acres. The mayor will also be joining us. And as many of you recall, last year, we held multiple listening session regarding the 102 Acres. Hundreds of attendees of all ages, race, ethnicity, housing status, neighborhoods and businesses attended these listening session. And these sessions really meant for them to really share with us what they wanted to see happen with the 102 Acres and to really help guide the development of the property. And so we will be having this session to provide updates on those findings and also provide next step from the city in terms of timeline. So wanted to make sure that I announce that. It's happening next Wednesday, January 25th, 6:00 to 7:30 at the Pennell Community Center. We definitely want folks to RSVP because space is a little bit limited and we want to make sure we have enough refreshments provided. So you can RSVP online at www.hartandhustle.org/102acresupdate. That's backslash 102 A-C-R-E-S-U-P-D-A-T-E. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. For those of you who may not be aware, in the Pocket Greenhaven area, we have a coyote running loose in that area. And the coyote is, is thin, is frail, it's, but it, it is causing fear among the residents. And so with that in mind, my office, along with the City of Sacramento Animal Control, will be hosting a meeting at the Robbie Waters Library tomorrow, the 18th of January at 6:00 PM. And that's for all residents who want to understand how to address this matter and what do we do as far as making sure that no one gets hurt. We're going to encourage all residents to bring empty cans with pennies and/or pebbles so they can make coyote shakers. If you've never made a coyote shaker in your life, this is an opportunity to make the best-looking coyote shaker so when the coyote is in your area or in your presence, you can shake your coyote shaker and that coyote will run the opposite way. So they're going to come there, they're going to answer all questions, they're going to demonstrate how to make the noise makers, they're going to talk about how to make sure you keep your family safe, and also the things that can be done in order to bring the coyote in and to be able to take it somewhere where it will not be a threat to our residents. So that's going to happen once again tomorrow at the Robbie Waters Library at 6:00 PM. So come on out for that. We also, weather permitting, in February, February the 4th, we want you to join us for the Lewis Park tree planting. As long as the weather is permitting and the soil is not too moist, you've seen the devastation with the wind and the rain as far as the number of trees that we've lost. This will start the process of replanting again in our parks and in our community. And so I know all my colleagues will be doing the same with the Sacramento Tree Foundation and Parks and Recs here in the city of Sacramento. But we're going to start replanting because this is the city of trees, the city that we love with all our heart and soul. We're going to get back all the trees that we lost, and I see you out there nodding, I know you know this is the right thing to do. So we're going to start that back and as long as weather's permitting, that'll be on February the 4th from 9:00 to 12:00 PM at the Lewis Park. Tools will be provided. All we ask is that you wear appropriate clothing and wear sunscreen. Lewis Park is located at 6570 Park Riviera Way. At my office, you can contact my office if you didn't get any of this information. We'll give you all of this information, plus it'll be on our, on our website. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Maple.
Yes, I have two announcements or one announcement for two different events. So we're glad to have Sacramento Juneteenth Incorporated hosting a couple of events at the Oak Park Community Center. First one will be happening on January 19th, that's this week, and that will be a Martin Luther King slash civil rights themed essay contest. So that's geared towards middle and high school students. They will be submitting essays expressing their sentiments regarding Martin Luther King and the importance of the civil rights movement. So excited about that. The, the participants will be awarded prizes and the top three winners will receive larger amounts of cash, so super excited. So please come by the Oak Park Community Center from 5:00 to 8:00 PM on the 19th. And then on the 23rd, there'll be a recognition of Black History Month, so they'll be hosting a themed art contest. So they'll be hosting a themed art contest for artists from 17 to 24 years old. And so that will be at the Oak Park Community Center between 5:00 and 8:00 PM. So hope to see you there. Thanks.
Very good. Events picking up. I love it. Councilmember Kaplan.
I just want to thank everybody in our community that worked so hard yesterday to pull together three different MLK events. I hope, as we're always stronger together, that we may find a way that, as Councilmember Valenzuela I heard bring up, that we could all end up at the Capitol, where we start somewhere and come together because our community is always stronger together. So thank you for everyone for doing that. And then again, I, it needs to be said, our city staff, regional staff who have worked on these storms for almost two weeks finally get a small break. So kudos to all of them. Our levees held up, like we got some repairs, we got some seepage, we got some things we need to fix, but we all worked well together regionally, city, state, county, police, fire, and everyone else to keep us safe, and I'm appreciative of that. And then there are those who go above and beyond who wish to remain anonymous for unhoused community members. This is a general shout out for everybody who does the work behind the scenes, doesn't want to be noticed, but is out there every day. People do see you doing that. And so speaking in regards to our unhoused, one of the things that I know is on our city auditor's plate. And as we're going into the partnership and Measure O with the county, I would like to, and I hope my fellow colleagues can reach out to the city auditor or our city manager and express that I would like to expedite our audit of how we've used our funds for our unhoused neighbors and homelessness. Not to say what we've done wrong, but as we're going into a partnership, I'm a big fan of audits because I think it's what we could look at, how we've spent our money, what's working, how can we improve in what we're doing? And I think as we go, we're going into budget deficits. So we really need the budget information on what's working, what do we keep, what do we expand, and what is something that we can divert and becomes part of the partnership? And I see audits as a great way to do that so that I hope that that's something we can reach out and expedite getting that done sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Councilmember Kaplan, I fully support that. I think that's really gonna be a function of this council contacting the city auditor to reprioritize that audit.
I actually, from budget and audit, there is, it's already, yeah, I've actually requested for that in budget and audit because we want to see how we spent those dollars throughout all of our departments. And so I think we also heard from Councilman Kaplan that that's urgent as well, we'll make sure to reiterate that in budget and audit because that was a request from our committee.
And it is on the table to do, but I think it's as a matter of, is it a priority for all of this? And I would hope that everybody can reach out to our city auditor and say that is actually the priority of what we should be focusing on right now.
Yep. Let's find out his timeline, his office's timeline now, and then make it clear it is a priority because you're right, as we're going into this partnership, we want to make sure we're maximizing all our dollars. Okay, Councilmember Laloe.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just to echo what my colleagues have said, I really want to thank the city staff, Code, Public Works, Utilities, especially SMUD, for really, from where I was sitting and looking, doing a great job to do this recovery from this massive storm that really, I didn't think it's gonna be this severe, you know? Typically, if the weatherman says it's raining, I'm assuming that it probably rains for about two minutes, but this time they were actually real. So great thanks to all the staff. I also want to thank the Roberts Family Development for hosting the MLK March in District Two yesterday. It was phenomenal. But I also want to echo what Councilmember Kaplan alluded to, and that is, and I mentioned this yesterday, that, you know, I learned about Dr. Martin Luther King, not in this country, but in my homeland of Iran. So the name is international. And the one thing that he was very big on was unity. And so, you know, the goal is, as you indicated, if we can start a march and meet somewhere in numbers and hopefully we can demand changes and policy changes in one voice and so we can see a better future. So I just want to thank everybody that was involved in all the marches yesterday. Do I have a question regarding the 102 Acres in Councilmember, in Mayor Protemp Vang's district? Have we received, did we get the easement on that property yet? I know that was a big wait.
We have, but, you know, we're also working with the adjacent property owners to get access. Just, it's a function of what's gonna be more cost effective because coming from the federally property to the property we purchased, it's a pretty long run. And so we're looking at other alternatives that could be less costly.
But as far as the federal government goes, we got days.
Yes.
Fantastic. And my second question, Mayor Protemp, during your community meetings, I know initially when this 102 acre land came on the table, the discussion primarily was, you know, housing and low income housing. During your last year conversation with the community, has that come up? Is that something being considered? And if so, is it a portion of that land that we're kind of dedicating to that because it is 102 acres? And I know you have, you know, a lot more meetings coming up and you don't have to answer me now, maybe after those meetings, but I just want to make sure, is the element of affordable housing part of those conversations? And if so, what portion of this property is being utilized for that?
Thank you for your question.
That has come up. You know, I don't want to get ahead of myself.
Well, one, I will definitely invite you to our community conversation happening next week at the 102 Acres update, so we'd encourage you to attend. There is a strong commitment from my office and what I've heard from the community to ensure that we have affordable housing.
Let me, if I may, I'm sorry, I'm just concerned, I don't mean to interrupt, but this isn't on the agenda. And so I just be a little concerned that we don't.
I'll call you later.
We don't.
Yeah, you can call me as well.
We need to engendize, especially as Councilmember Vang continues to uplift the community and with the passage of Measure N and all the great things we have planned together.
No, my apologies. I know that Mayor Protemp is championing this and I have full confidence that it's gonna come out okay. Just wanted to get an update, but we'll talk later. One of the concerns I have, Mr. City Manager, and I don't know how we're gonna approach this, recently I read that between JP Morgan and BlackRock, each one has set aside $1 billion to purchase houses the minute we hit that recession with some of the foreclosures and what have you. And their plan is to have about 30 to 35, no, I'm sorry, 45 to 55% of the houses available for rental and keep the rest of them vacant, obviously, to keep the rent elevated. Do we have any kind of program or any kind of a platform that would, we can manage this before they hit the city and gobble up all the available single family?
So two things on that is, I've not heard that. Second is, what you're talking about is the council taking a defensive posture and we've not considered what that could look like or if this council wants to do something like that.
Well, I read, I just wanted to, maybe you and I can discuss it, I'll discuss it with Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much. And last but not least, as majority of you know, I am originally from Iran and there's a big turmoil and what started as protests has turned into a revolution. In the last hundred days, about 20,000 people have been arrested, over 2,000 people have been killed. Almost 99% of the women that are getting arrested, they're getting abused and raped. And now they just announced that by the end of this week, they're gonna hang a 16-year-old for protesting. During this time, there is approximately about, roughly about 50 individuals that are under age 16 that has also been killed by military weapons. So I've talked to the mayor already and my office is gonna, is working on a resolution that I'll send to each one of you and hopefully I can get your support on this because there's a genocide taking place in that country. And I just want to make sure we're all aware of it. And the rights of, you know, fighting for the right of women and in particular the LGBT community that is, and human rights, that's not being watched or controlled whatsoever. So I hope that I can get your support on that resolution.
We'll, I promise you, we will engendize that resolution. Okay? Okay. Unless it has to go through committee first, but we'll talk about that. Just, you got, hey, you have an, let me tell you, you, she was, he was kidding. You have an excellent chair who I undoubtedly would be sympathetic to this cause, so we will follow this, we will follow the process. We may follow the process. Okay. Councilmember Telemontes.
There you go. All right.
There you go.
I also just want to thank city staff for coming out. South Natomas was pretty flooded. I myself was really flooded and was stuck in my home for about two hours and tried to get water out of my home and it was frustrating, scary, but our neighborhood came together. I mean, everyone came outside, got their shovels or rakes and we just kind of bonded over, I mean, a terrible thing, but thank you to city staff, especially Parvani, for sending me updates about the sump stations in my area. So just thankful for staff. And then Councilmember Laloe, your report on BlackRock and Invitation Homes and Open Door to protect people in the area is welcomed on my end too. So, City Manager, if you can look into that on how we can protect homes in the area so that people here in the area can buy them, that'd be wonderful.
That would be a perfect opportunity, all kidding aside, for lawn ledge to take up as an item to be heard.
So I just want to say, we're gonna call on you in a minute, Barbara, okay?
We're not sparing off, you know, businesses because, again, you know, people that want to come and buy a house as an investment, one or two, I can see that, but when.
Yeah, we need to stop. Thank you, Sean. So I'm gonna say the final word on the thank yous for a moment here. I know it's not a popular political slogan to say, "It could have been worse." But really, when you think about what we have been through over these last couple of weeks, it really could have been worse. And that's, accepting, of course, the people who lost their lives, including the two unhoused people has been well reported because that's terrible and you can't repair the loss of life. But when you think about the enormity of the storms, the enormity of the street flooding, the amount of difficulty and challenge that this community faced, it's pretty remarkable that it wasn't worse. And a lot of that is attributable to preparation. You think about flood control and how this community has made flood control a priority for decades. The federal government, Congresswoman Matsui, and state leadership and local leadership, including the people assessing themselves consistently to build up our levees and it, and then add to that this incredible staff, this city team. I saw it out at the courtyard several times. And it's not just our city staff, it's the county staff, it's the SMUD frontline workers. I mean, so many unsung people are out there making the terrible a little less terrible and helping us recover faster. And so I know, Howard, sometimes you feel like we don't do enough or say enough or recognize the incredible public service that the men and women who work for this city perform on a daily basis. I just want you to know that we see it and we have certainly seen it over the last couple of weeks in major ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And we do see it and the city staff, more than seeing it, they feel it. Because many of you have come out to the Department Operations Center, sandbag stations, you know, had conversations with Councilmember Telemontes with the flooding. We've been inundated. I mean, the flooding in South Natomas, we had this downpour, it was like people were pouring buckets of water down on her neighborhood and it just overwhelmed our sump pumps. But it took us a couple hours to catch up. But no, I appreciate all of you really for coming out and supporting the team in a real way. And like I said, I've heard nothing but positive feedback and this is really a testament to just the preparation you talk about, the exercising all year round, even when it's sunny skies. And we have a really great team. Thank you.
Okay, finally, we do have a member of the public that had to step out, who's now back, I don't want to give her the opportunity. Take your two minutes, Barbara, and then we will adjourn.
Thank you. Trees everywhere.
Welcome, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Delivering groceries throughout the streets, there's tree bundles everywhere. So if anyone wants to go into a tree business, I'll tell you, just need a good chainsaw. So, hi, I'm Barbara. I'm back again. I want to stay more engaged with the council, with the city. God is very much a part of my mission and my life right now. And he says, "Get out there, get some solid housing and get some community." So that's what I need to do, is connect community with my housing, my housing with my community. It's gonna be like one and the same thing, where I go into my living room, go into my kitchen, make a little meal, go sit in the living room, and I'm sitting with community, even if nobody's there, but God's there. And that's where I need to go.
Thank you.
So I did talk with Michael Jassel, who did get back to me today and refer me to somebody else. So anybody else, my information's on a slip of paper somewhere. Just, please, I'm gonna stay in contact and make every meeting. All right, thank you. God bless.
Thank you. If there's nothing else to come before the city council, we're adjourned.